All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to the order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. During roll call, we have all council members present. Is there any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to adopting the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. And we'll move on to approving the city council meeting minutes. These are from June fourth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we have the city offices closed tomorrow, Wednesday, June nineteenth for Juneteenth. We have Park and Recreation Board meeting coming up Tuesday, June twenty fifth at six P M. We have a city council meeting Tuesday, June, July second at seven P M. And the E D A meeting also on July second, immediately following the council meeting. Do we have any council committee reports?
I'll be going to the L M C training event next week, so that'll be interesting. Um, and Chamber of Commerce meets tomorrow morning and School Board is Thursday, so next meeting I'll have more updates from those. So that should be a fun couple of days down there. At L M C.
That's in Rochester?
Yeah.
I'm glad you're going.
Yeah, I, I hope it, uh, yeah, I hope it goes well.
It will.
Just don't take everything as gospel truth down there.
Oh, no, really, you don't say.
All right, any other council committee reports?
Uh, the B M X, uh, they had their association meeting. Uh, they went over their national race and went very well and good attendance. And, uh, that's about it.
Yeah, it was really nice of them to invite us to participate in that and that was, that was a lot of fun. Any other committee reports? All right, moving on to business item K one, we have the presentation of the twenty twenty four Isani ambassadors and candidates. Thanks for coming in here, guys. Do we need to get names and addresses for the record from all of these ladies? All right, just names, please.
My name is Mackenzie Long and I'm a junior Isani ambassador with me. I have Cece and we have our third junior Isani ambassador Sage. She couldn't make it today, but then we have our junior Isani ambassador candidates.
Hi, guys.
My name is Annabelle. I have Chloe and Lauren with me today and we are your twenty twenty three Isani ambassadors. And the behind me are twenty twenty four candidates.
My name is Grace and my sponsor is Stark Quality Glass.
My name is Morgan and my sponsor is Jimmy's Pizza.
My name's Emily and my sponsor is Idle Hands Tattoo.
Awesome. Anything else you guys want to say?
Well, I want to thank you guys for your service. My sister was an ambassador in two thousand and eleven, um, so it's great to see that, uh, y'all want to be interested and kind of promote our community to other communities and show everybody how great Isani is.
Yeah, no, I know you guys are out there working hard and going to lots of events and, and I think, uh, it'd be, uh, any one of you, I'm sure will be, will be a good ambassador and, and, uh, yeah, thanks for everything you guys are doing.
I'd like to further ditto that, uh, sentiment. We do appreciate the graciousness that they come to so many of our city events and lend a hand, helping hand, which is so needed at a lot of these things. And they are always just eager to help out with a smile and great attitude every single time. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to K two, the resolution to consider amending the development agreement for Barak Realty LLC.
Good evening, councilors. In twenty twenty two, Barak Realty, um, entered into a development agreement with the, um, city of Isani, um, for the land that they purchased through the E D A. Um, for, to construct the America First C D L Academy. Um, the deadline to begin construction was on March twelfth, twenty twenty four. Um, they did get their site plan approved on November first, um, in twenty twenty two, but they're still working towards, um, the construction of the project, which they plan to begin in the coming months. Um, the business was, did attend the E D A meeting and did request an extension of this, and this is the, um, development agreement that accompanies that. The E D A board did, um, recommend approval of the extension. This formalizes that extension.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve that extension from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K three, the resolution to consider adopting a policy for illuminate Isani community displays.
Good evening again, councilors. Um, it was discussed, um, at the twenty twenty four illuminate Isani, um, discussion meetings that we had, um, that we should consider allowing community displays at the event, um, which is what we're naming them, so we don't confuse them with our own displays. Um, and so we have a few things to consider with them, um, along with a policy that helps us streamline the process, so we don't get possibly inappropriate displays. And so a few of those things are, um, who should be allowed to install community display, displays? Should civic groups, youth organizations, nonprofits, and for-profit businesses be allowed? Um, should they just be Isani-based or do they not have to be Isani-based? Um, for for-profit businesses, should we require them to have sponsorships? Most of the, um, displays we've had in the past from businesses were from sponsors who, um, donated money to the event as well. Um, will we require, um, our power availability and liability are considerations we added to the policy as well as the timeline for installation and removals? We gave them about a week before and two weeks after the event, um, weather permitting. And gave timelines as well as when staff would be available to help with securing, since we don't want, um, anyone else pounding stakes theoretically into our infrastructure that we have, since we have a lot of electrical out in the park. Um, so we would like our own, um, public works guys to help with that piece of it. Um, but if there's any other things that you guys would like to consider, um, we'd like to hear that as well.
I, I would like to see it, if we can, just limit to Isani County or the city of Isani businesses or people that get involved with it. I think that would be fair, but I don't know how much, have we had a lot of interest in people participating in illuminate now or?
Um, as far as, we haven't, we, we haven't really pushed it out. We're waiting for this to be completed in order for us to push it out more and we'll have a better idea of what that looks like once this policy is approved and moving forward.
How do you feel about limiting the people that can participate? Do you think we'll have enough to, to fill it or?
Um, currently, on our current layout, we have six spaces designated areas, um, that, um, because we would like every person to have their own dedicated electric. So if something were to happen.
Right.
Um, they're not, you know, interfering with each other, um, in any way or ruining each other's displays. Um, but at the same time, I think, as with everything, the first time we start to allow it, you have fewer, but it could grow over the years. So I think there's potential for good growth from participants, um, within the community, once they see what is possible. Um, we also, in the policy, it also limits what kind of displays can be allowed. Um, for instance, inflatable displays take up a lot of power, the blower motors do, um, which we already are using a lot of power in the park throughout the event, so we don't want them to draw extra power. So we're limiting it to L E D lights only, um, and displays that can be secured. And if anything, we're going to get ruined of theirs, we're not held liable for that and they'll be required to come and pick it up, um, if it's, if they can't repair it onsite, um, in a timely fashion.
I don't think it should be limited just to Isani County or city of Isani. I think there's a lot of businesses, let's just take, for example, a radio station. They do business up here, even though it's from the city. You know, they draw from this business.
But then how do we decide who, who gets the spots? That's the.
It's gonna have to be a first come, first served basis.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm not opposed to just saying it's from Isani, city of Isani, Isani County, but I, but hey, if they don't want to step up and do it right away. But I, if the more we can get from it, the better off it's going to be.
And so would you like those to be based on sponsorships then, like is outlined?
Well, I'm thinking, I mean, if, let's say if they're within the city, maybe it's free for them and if they're without side, you know, outside the city, maybe we charge.
Even for business, even for for-profit businesses within the city?
I don't know what I was thinking.
When, okay, because we've required other businesses in the past just to have sponsorships, which have been in the city also.
I think we should still require a sponsorship of some kind.
So like Minnesota Equipment has been a sponsor for a number of years and they had a display last year, but they gave us, um, over a thousand dollars to, you know, for a display.
I still think sponsorship is a good idea.
We still need a sponsorship fee. I mean, we have to try and get, not go further in the hole with this too. You know, if you have a display that's put out there that spends a thousand bucks on electricity and they don't sponsor it, then, you know, the city's further in debt with it, but I like the idea though.
Well, but I mean, remember, the, the problem we're trying to solve is that we're growing the event still, because we're not charging anything, uh, any, this next year, so it's a free event. But it, we're growing it and we're not having to store the displays, which is, is the, so I mean, is it, do you want to make it easier to add more displays?
But we only win for six more.
True.
So.
Yeah, so if, if we charge, you're saying people will pay it if they're interested?
I, I mean, I think that's only fair too, because people have paid it in the past.
And we could vary that between for-profit or nonprofit or civic organizations, like if the school district wanted to put one in, out there, maybe then don't require a sponsorship from them.
I think nonprofit is one that may be not a sponsorship, but if for-profit business, they should pay a sponsorship. I don't care who you are, you gotta pay your fairware, you know? But I think nonprofit is, you know, you might get something else from somebody else that's going to help out a lot for that, you're a nonprofit.
We could also require a volunteer, a volunteer day from those nonprofit or youth organizations in, you know, if, if you're going to put one in here, in the park, a display out, a community display, you have to volunteer for one of the event nights. That would be one way we could do it also.
I love that idea.
Yeah, that would help too.
Yeah, that may be the thing, nonprofits, maybe they volunteer for one night out there. And then, then the rest be a sponsorship program, sponsorship part.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I could be talked out of that idea for saying it's free, but, I mean, I think that that's, if you're going to show some sort of, some sort of favoritism on it, I mean, I think the, the, Isani businesses and nonprofits should be, you know, because like you said, you only have six spaces, right? So I mean, I think they should get at least preference on that.
And we could limit it to any sponsorship, and we don't have to have it to six spaces, that's just what we've created for this year. Um, we just have no idea how many to plan for. We want to make sure they're on the outskirts of the, um, display area so that they're not trucking through the middle of all of the other, all of our displays. And so just trying to set aside, maybe we'll have, be back here in a month asking for a different layout and space, I don't know. Um, but just considering possibly, yeah. We could, we could have more, I'm saying.
I think I'd make a motion to any nonprofit, just as long as they volunteer for one night of service out there, free of charge, and then any profit, for-profit has a sponsorship.
How many volunteers?
We currently require eight, we were requiring eight when we were paying, um, when we were.
Eight, eight, eight every day or?
Yep, just eight for the one day.
What do you want to charge for the sponsorship for a for-profit?
Um, you can look at the sponsorship form that's attached and that kind of outlines.
The lowest one there was like five hundred dollars, right?
Yes.
So you're, you're going to say, we want you to put up a light display and we want to charge you five hundred dollars. So I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's, do we want them to add displays to add to the show or do we, you know, do we think that they'll do both? Is five hundred too much?
We could have a lower one.
They're going to spend money just to put a display up besides, so.
Yeah, potentially. We could, I mean, you could change a purchase or another sponsor, like a display sponsor for two hundred and fifty, um, and do something like that, but we already, like I just explained, we had, you know, Minnesota Equipment who was giving us a thousand and then they had a display, so it's.
But that was out of their goodness of their heart too, so.
Right, I'm not saying that, that still won't happen for some businesses, but just.
I'm not opposed.
And that was the display, did they buy that display and keep it? Or they bought it and we had to?
They purchased a display that we kept as well as provided a piece of equipment within the display as well.
Okay.
Just like D W companies.
Gotcha.
I'm not opposed to lowering that if they're, if they're supplying a display.
Hmm.
I mean, it's just giving something back to it, you know? I mean, displays aren't cheap, plain and simple.
Yeah, right.
How hard of a sell do you think this will be?
I don't know.
I mean, it's kind of, I hate to say it, but maybe just leave it up to, up to you to see what you think, because we can't really ju, I mean, you, you know what you're going to get in for calls and, I mean, you can judge, you know, tell people we haven't decided yet, but you can gauge the interest, I don't know.
I think we'll get a good interest from nonprofit organizations and of, of those type within our community, community organizations, maybe some youth. We've had a, the ones who have volunteered and know about the event and really have enjoyed it in the past. The school district's already interested in creating something, they're tech students, so I think having those, we could have some really cool, unique displays, um, just from those organizations potentially, so, I don't know. But I think, I don't want to sit here and shoot myself in the foot because I don't want a thousand dollars from good businesses who have already been sponsoring it and putting displays, so.
I mean, I, I would just like to see enough money come in to cover staff's costs, electricity. We break even after that, that, that was the main goal, is not to go further in the hole on this. So if you're going to put a formula, a formula together like that, we're, we're good to go.
Okay.
So how about, how about any, any groups that we don't want, you know, do you not want to have political groups or do you not want to have, uh?
Yep, it does state that in there.
Does state that already?
Yep, there's no political groups or, um, campaign or even taking a stance against someone or for anything.
No activist groups either?
What's that?
Activist groups?
Nothing like that is allowed.
Okay.
Not, not taking a stance. If you're a community group that stands for something that's a nonprofit.
Let's say, let's say Planned Parenthood wants to come and put a display, well.
They can put a display in as long as it's not involved with their, their messaging, you know? If they're not politically messaging or taking a stance on something.
Is that an activist group? Is that a political group? I mean, that's, that was kind of where my mind was going is, is, that's just for an example, I mean.
And also the walks.
Is that covered on what we, our language that we have now, you think? That would say no?
They're not allowed to take a stance on anything like that, so it would have to be a family-friendly depiction of, you know, in lights, so that's.
So same thing with like, let's say, like specialty clinic wanted to come in and do a display and as long as they weren't, they were just doing a Christmas light, that'd be fine.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, all right.
And the staff has discretion or not?
So the displays themselves cannot be politically, okay.
Is it right, is it saying there that staff has discretion, I assume somewhere, okay.
Okay. All right, so what I'm hearing is, uh, we want to go ahead and, and open it up, nonprofits, no charge, a for-profit sponsorship was two fifty, kind of the consensus, or was that, you want to just not put a number on it and kind of see what happens or? I don't know, and, and let staff decide, or I, I think they don't like to make decisions. It's our job to make decisions, so I think, I think two fifty is a good number, but.
I think two fifty is good too.
So, so we just add another tier to that sponsorship to be a display sponsor?
And then I'll just add, and I'll add that to all of the other sponsorships as well, that they're allowed to put a display then with nothing.
I think the nonprofits, they should donate.
Yeah, 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 right, yeah, no, no charge, but donate a, a day of volunteer time.
Yeah, or like a donation, we do have some organizations who give like popcorn or other things to the event in kind.
Something in lieu of. Okay.
Sure. All right, is there anything we're forgetting on that discussion or have we covered our bases there?
Nope, I think that's very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, and do you need a motion for any of that or just, yep?
Yes.
Okay.
I made that motion.
Okay.
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. All right, let's get back here. All right, so moving on to K four, resolution to consider adopting a policy for sponsorships.
Um, as I was working on the policy for displays, um, it just really made it apparent that we, I didn't have a sponsorship policy that I could look at to reflect on when I was creating this. And so, um, we get a lot of sponsorships now for park events and other things and this, um, was one way, one I just thought made sense for us to adopt at this time.
Make a motion to approve it.
I guess I did one, one question, I was, I mean, have we, is there an issue with the way that we're accepting sponsorships now? I mean, let's say if the, the Lions come and they say, we want to put a bench in here, I mean, do we have to, is that a sponsorship or that's just a?
It really allows us to increase our fairness, um, for sponsorships, to let people know that we're having, we accept sponsorships just outright throughout the year. Um, and just so increases our transparency for all businesses, so it doesn't seem like we're favoring people who may continue to sponsor activities when they, other businesses may not feel like they're being asked.
Right.
So this really helps increase that transparency and fairness for all.
Which I think that makes, that makes sense, but let's say if somebody just comes and they're, we didn't ask, we didn't solicit, solicit a sponsorship, do we treat that the way we always have?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a donation policy that's already existed for many years, that covers benches or giving a donation to a city park or in memorial of, we already have policies for that.
As well as in kind, we do have an in kind policy as well, but sponsorship specifically, we're not included in any of those, so this is just in addition to that.
This is just if, uh, you know, we need help with our splish splash summer bash.
Yes.
That it's posted, everybody has an opportunity to say that they'd like to sponsor, how are you going to decide who's going to sponsor it?
Um.
Highest bidder. Highest bidder.
We have multiple sponsors for a lot of our events, so there's just.
Okay.
Yep, different levels of sponsorship and, um, each one of these will then allow us to sign off on it, each sponsorship, so that we can say this is what we did and what was agreed upon. So it also helps us in that way with the sponsor as well, so if there was any discrepancy, all of a sudden they decided to charge us for something that they were giving to us.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
So I've got a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Uh, moving on to K five, the microphone continued discussion, so I don't know about you guys, I went back and listened to that video from last week and you didn't say much after we changed it over, but I don't think there was much difference at all, if, if anything, it was almost worse. I don't, did you guys go back and listen to it at all or?
We did, we thought it was a little bit better when he was turning, talking, directing towards you, um, because it followed him instead of being off to the side on the right. So we thought there was a little bit, there wasn't a lot of speaking, but we did think it was a little bit better, not for a better quality microphone at all, but just for picking it up when he was turning, talking to you.
Yeah.
Or talking, directed to council.
And that's the whole, the whole goal of this, I think, was to just get, stop those moments where you're back here, you know? That's the whole goal of it, because people are always asking, you know, what did they say in that part? We couldn't hear anything, so.
Hmm.
I, I do think that we need to turn up our gain or whatever we can on, on the amplifier in there, because it seems like you almost have to hold up your phone to your ear to listen to the meetings and I don't think, I don't think that should be the case. Um, so we need to boost that somehow, but I.
Can we, can we try that first before we?
Well, that'll turn up, that'll turn up the overall loudness, but it won't turn up what's picked up on the microphone and what's not. So it can only, in there, the stereo will only pick up and amplify what's there, like these, these don't have any range on them, so that's the problem, the, the range is, you know, three feet away, you can't hear it.
Right.
So there's no range to it, it can only pick up a certain amount of whatever, so.
I think we're all getting a little bit more disciplined on trying to stay close to the mic, but I like raising the gain and seeing if it affects the quality of our voices, if it doesn't, it actually raises the volume and then at least people have an option to turn it down a little bit and turn it up if there's some parts of our conversations, they're having a hard time.
Also, I, so we had, we had a quote, and I remember you said that there was implementation fees or they had to run some wires over, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
There was, in this quote, there was something about, or we talked about, they'd have to charge for running wires over to the hub, correct?
Uh, well, the quote, I don't know if it specifically breaks that apart, but it does have install included.
Okay, because if you look under here, it's a standard microphone outlet, you should be able to take any microphone that we buy, unplug this one and plug that one in, so they shouldn't have to run anything over there, so that's something that they might be charging us for. You can actually probably buy these, um, I didn't look up this specific model, but even looking up some of these, you can buy these new for three hundred dollars. So you might even be able to, we might be able to do this for twelve hundred bucks and for some reason.
And then they throw you twelve hundred bucks if it don't work.
Yeah, I mean, we know it's going to work, it'll work, but is it going to be better? I don't know.
I, I think, I think we're, um, um, I personally would pay somebody to do what they do for a living.
All you do is plug it in down here.
That's what you say, but that cord that plugs in down there, they've changed those coax connections over the years. That's not the same coax. When this was installed probably twenty years ago, that was probably pretty standard.
They, they're, they're still the same.
Right.
I ha, I have a bunch of them at home, it's, it's, it's common, so I think that.
I think sometimes you're throwing money, you're thinking you're saving money, but you're going to be throwing money out the window when you go through this. I'm, I've always been a firm believer, pay somebody to do what they know best.
I'm just kind of looking at the picture on the bid here, I mean, it looks like that is that.
It's the same cable, I, I promise.
It's a ten foot, ten foot audio cable.
It is, it is the most common connector in all audio, so, I mean, the whole reason we're doing this is because some of us don't sit close enough to the microphone all the time, so we need to address the problem. People are bringing it up that it's a problem. We've been having this discussion for two years on this and this audio company hasn't get, hasn't sent us in the right direction yet, so why do we keep throwing them money? If they're going to charge us for something, I mean, I can come up here, I'll, I can come up here and plug all this stuff in in five minutes.
The one thing I do want to say is this company that we currently go with is far exceeds the company we had before and they've done a lot of patching to get it to work for.
Hmm.
A previous company's shortcomings, I just want to say that, because they have been really great to work with and had been a fraction of the price of what we used to pay and still had tons of, tons of issues. So I do want to just put that out there, we definitely could go with another vendor, but the problem that we've had and why it was so difficult to find this vendor to work on this equipment is because this is Crestron equipment and it takes a certain vendor to work with it and we don't want to go with the vendor we had before. So we can look at swapping everything out, even the rack in the back, but then now we're going to get into higher costs if we want to, because we, we did have them modify our amplified, um, sound. We used to have a lot more control, um, on this touch panel here, but we got so much feedback that it wasn't beneficial, so I know that they did some audio control stuff in the back, um, to make sure that there wasn't. there wasn't feedback coming through every time people spoke. So there is that.
Well, what I'm saying is, we can buy these ourselves for a lot cheaper and we can plug them in ourselves, because it's got a standard, it's got a standard microphone plug-in down here. They shouldn't have to do any sort of wiring additions, which, which should save us money. I mean, I didn't look up this specific model, but like I said, these are around 300 bucks, these ones. And these are more expensive than the, than the lanyard style ones. So I mean, we'd probably, you could save a thousand bucks by us just plugging them ourselves if it's got the right connector. I mean, I can look more into this, but I just, it's hard to, to trust the audio companies when we still, this has been a year after year issue and we still don't have a solution that works for everything. I mean, ideally, yeah, we'd all talk into microphones, but not everybody does.
Oh, but I mean, it really makes a difference whether you're here or you're here, you know, which is amazing, isn't it? Yeah, so.
These microphones suck.
The one thing I, and I should attest it maybe for the meeting, is if you were to pick up your microphone, Councilmember Heman, how far can you pull it back before you're stuck with the cable?
Well, there's, there's like 12 feet under there, it looks like.
I'm not sure how much is underneath.
There's a lot.
Four feet?
There's more than that, it's a coil.
Because if you were to just hold it, not saying that we always want to hold it, but I think what I hear on the meetings is when, and I think it's maybe more so the people, council members on the ends, is when you're turning, talking into each other, which rightfully so. When you're talking to the audience, I don't hear an issue. It's when you're talking in and you, you turn to go like this.
Maybe move your mic more like this one is. So when you do turn, you're talking more directly into it, because you're not going to, none of us are going to turn this way to talk. More, nine times out of 10, you're not going to. Then we don't spend any money.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking after watching that video today. I wasn't impressed enough with the, I mean, maybe you guys said you thought it was better. I, I didn't notice that, I guess. But I wasn't impressed enough by going to the lapel mic that I thought, yeah, I think we should spend 2,500 bucks to, to get to that. I mean, I think, I'd be with you, Steve. I think maybe just wait, hold off. And Luke, I mean, that gives us more time. If you wanted to look into, you know, maybe we could just plug in our own microphones too. And, and, but I don't really want to spend the money on this right now if we can just fix it with a little bit more of a, a simple solution, so.
I agree, yeah, I can look into that, no problem. But it is one of the most complained things that I hear about is.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean.
I was, I was going back.
They've already dropped 100 grand or more on this audio, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. I was going back and listening to a planning meeting yesterday, I think it was. And there was a spot there where it's like, all of a sudden, there's a silent spot and then somebody answers a question, you know, and it's like, well, what was the question?
Because they're not sitting close enough to the microphone. And there's a couple guilty here. I mean, that's, you don't want to spend the money, but when you have a problem, you have to fix it.
Right.
So, but, but yeah, I think, let's, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, the other thing we could do is, we don't always have all staff here. So staff can share microphones, we don't each need our own. We can put some of our wireless mics in between Councilmember Heman and Merrill. And then maybe that would pick up in between when he's talking in and give the people who don't set up maybe more microphones.
Or you could even take the end one and move it down.
Correct.
It's not an idea.
Jeffs would move in between us and then that one he could move down to him. That's another option to do.
Yeah, I could use that one, move this one between Luke and I. That might work.
One on each side of you.
Yeah, well, let's keep thinking about ideas and we can maybe try that next, next meeting and see what happens, so. All right. Any other items for discussion here on? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.